I'll be reporting City Council meeting order from Wednesday, September 10, 2018, 6:30 PM. City Council room, all members of the council present, others include two council members, Preger and Laura Dogan, our city manager. The next item is to approve the minutes of August 20, 2019. And I would entertain a motion.
Some would.
A motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Main and seconded discussion on the minutes. Hearing that, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public. Before we start, I just want to let everyone know, I've had several people stop me and say, "Well, why are we having a council meeting the night of a landfill meeting?" Well, this was scheduled actually before the other meeting. There's a gentleman who organized that actually stopped by my office and said, he got confused on the dates and that's why it was scheduled for tonight. So, it was one of those unfortunate things, two important meetings. I just wanted to let that know, everyone know that. Let's see, Mr. Carti?
I hope you'll let me finish. At the last meeting that I was here, when the discussion on the sign over there was squashed, the way it happened, I think is very, very sorry, it's horrible. That sign represents the city in a board, it represents the people in a board. And I know where Dan is coming from, to maybe pay somebody to get it, but I think it's important enough for every organization in this town to be able to put something on there. And I would hope that somehow it could be resurrected and at least looked into. One possibility that I mentioned to Dan, he would know more about it, is to see if there are some kids in the career center which are geniuses. They could possibly come down and do it, and I think they would be willing to help me. So I hope that could be worked out, Paul, I really do. That's it.
Other comments?
Well, I'd like to speak a little bit to the last meeting, and I found it very emotional. And I think it might have gone better, maybe, if Paul had recused himself from that one item and let Dennis be in the chair and moderate what was going on, so that we wouldn't have that personal thing involved. The other thing that upset me, there was a lot of conversation that didn't go through the mayor. And our procedures are, we speak to the mayor. And we had one person, all that trampled me, who was up turning on the TVs and stuff, was not recognized by the mayor. So I kind of felt like she hijacked the meeting to get her appointment across. And I thought that was totally inappropriate. And as far as bringing back the sign, I'm pretty sure there's two programs that have students that would be more than willing to come down and code for the sign. And these students are already doing four or five different programs. So learning a program for them would be probably pretty easy. And at the school now, we have a system where we want kids out on work, learning to work, and want them out there doing community service. And a lot of people are afraid of a 17 or 18-year-old doing something crazy. Well, 17 and 18-year-olds do things that are crazy, but I think we can find and control everything, we can control that. And it would free up the department heads from having to come up with something. It would free Jess up, because I'm sure, I know what the office was like in the past. It's a limited time in a day to do what you have to do. So anytime you can get an intern or, and for years we had an intern that was in zoning, that was doing the simple stuff, and it worked out well. I don't know if he was there when you were there, if he was there when Bob Kelly was there. And the young people at the school are allowed to do a 30-hour unpaid internship. And I was talking, I don't know who I was talking to, Mr. Burney, I think. Throughout the summer, you have students working off VSAC. You know, there might be grants for a student to do an internship and do something like that. But, and I know sometimes I speak out of turn, but I'm really going to try to focus everything that I do through the mayor, so that we're doing what we're supposed to do.
No one else signed up for public comment, so the next item on the agenda is the Kingdom Swim Event Heat Read for Phil White. Phil is not able to make it tonight, there was a mix-up in the dates, he thought it was next week's meeting, not tonight's meeting, but he did send a memo, which I can read for the council, it says, "City of Newport from Phil White, Director of Kingdom Games, CBA Can Swim, September 10, 2018, Use of Prati Beach for Kingdom Swim. On July 28, 2018, Kingdom Games hosted the 10th Annual Kingdom Swim at Prati Beach and the East Side Restaurant. It was underwritten by RDI Newport. The City of Newport waived its fees of $411 for use of the beach. Kingdom Games has paid the City the $25 permit application fee and $800 coverage by the Newport Police Department, reduced from $1,250 because the police vote broke down at the start of the race and was unavailable for the rest of the day. The swim consisted of 1 mile, 5 kilometers, 10 mile and 25 K distances. 125 swimmers and 100 kayakers participated in the swim along with their friends and family members. They traveled from Mexico, Switzerland, Ontario, and Quebec, as well as 18 states, including California, Oregon, Colorado, Wisconsin, Connecticut, Florida, Massachusetts, Maryland, Maine, New Hampshire, New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, South Carolina, Tennessee, Texas, Virginia, and Vermont, plus the District of Columbia. 15 local volunteers, plus two who traveled from Rhode Island, helped out on the beach. 30 community members volunteered to pilot and crew patrol boats out on the course. In addition to the Newport PD and the Vermont State Police, in addition to the Newport PD, the Vermont State Police provided a presence out on the water. The 25K Border Buster continues its popularity since we started it in 2014. It is one of several swims that cross the border into Canada, which reestablished international swimming on Lake Mempharim. They include Son of a Swim, 10, Border Buster's 26, Clubhouse Swim 16, In Search of Memphrey July 7, I'm not quite sure what these numbers are, In Search of Memphrey September 4, Swim to Hill Long and Balancing Rock 1. U.S. and Canadian border officials have been extremely helpful in facilitating the logistics of crossing the border with these swims. While they were here, Kingdom swimmers and yackers donated a total of $1,873.70 to the Mempharim watershed association. We appreciate the willingness of the City to waive its fees for use of Prati Beach and hope that the support will continue in future years. We have set the date for the 11th Annual Kingdom Swim, July 27, 2019. We have won the bid to host the U.S. Masters Swimming National 10-Mile Championship in 2020. Kingdom Games is also hosting 5-mile USMS national championships on Lake Willoughby in 2019." And that's from Phil White. So that was his update for his summer events.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
How did it come to be that Phil provided that? Was he asked to come in and give his breakdown, or did he offer?
Normally, there's a debrief.
We haven't had any since we've been doing this process with events. We've had nobody come and do the debrief.
Yeah, we have. The people came after one of...
The young children.
The young children, people, they came in and did the debrief.
And then a handful of the other ones are, of course, happening this September, but I'll have to check on the other ones.
But we have had, the young child has come twice, I think, to do a debrief.
So was Phil asked to provide that?
Um, this, well, he wrote the letter, but I think he was, he planned on being here this evening.
Next week.
Oh, next, next week. He planned on being here on the 17th, but he had emailed this today.
He submitted that, and I asked him if he would like us to read that instead, coming next weekend, or next week. I thought that would be fine. So this meets the debrief criteria.
Right, my question is, was he asked?
No.
So he just did it voluntarily?
Okay.
Oh, okay, I see, okay.
It worked out great, it met the need.
Well, it is in the event policy that they, the event organizer will provide a debrief.
Right.
The next item is Parks and Recreation 2019 Rate Follow-Up.
So, following up with the questions about rates from last week, you can see in your memo, there was three different areas to take a look at. The first one was the city dock theme, I passed that by the harbor master, and he said, "Absolutely, you can do that, no problem." So that, we'll go ahead and implement that for 2019. The next item was the non-motorized boat rentals, so I called around to a few different places and got the pricing, you can see that laid out there. I asked Andy, our park supervisor over at Prati Beach, "How come we do free rentals for the bikes?" He let me know that that was a stipulation for the grant that helps fund those, that's the only reason that we do that. And then I asked him, "Should we do that with the boat rentals?" And he said, "Hmm, there is some costs associated with replacing the fleet and maintaining that, so it would probably not be wise to do that, because a lot of our rentals do come from Newport residents." So, he thought that that probably wasn't the best fit. But I do think that, looking at these other prices, we could reduce the fees down, and I prefer to leave it regardless of residency, only because we have a lot of rates and a lot of resident and non-resident rates, and it's really just out of simplicity. I think that we could decrease things overall. So you can see that the initial proposed amount for the hourly rate was $10, we keep that the same, because that looks fine. The four-hour rate was 31, we can knock that down to 25 to make it more competitive, and then the daily rate to $4 instead of $53. So the council will apply it, or have them suggest, anything else you'd like to see?
Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, the, um, are there very many rentals of the boats, I mean, the non-motorized boats?
It varies from summer to summer. Last year we had a very few, but this year we've had more. I would have to give the exact number for me, Andy, they track that stuff in their log, but if I had to guess, an educated guess would probably be during the months of July, especially in August, I'd say maybe we have three or four rentals a month, so not very often. And usually it's the four-hour time period. We don't usually get day rentals, we don't usually get per hour, because it usually takes more than an hour to throw a boat around.
And then my other question, is it from the campers who are using the beach, or is it just people who come in? Just curiosity, just my curiosity.
That's a good question. I know that some people just go down and use the boats, but some of the campground folks, I would assume do too. I'm just not sure if that's included in the rate for their people to stay, or if that's an additional fee.
That was just my own curiosity, I was just trying to track.
I don't think a lot of people know about the boats, it's a little bit challenging for us to really station that and market that well, because we don't have someone who's dedicated to issuing those rentals, so the only time someone can rent a boat is if they find a park staff, you know, down at the lower beach house. I think it might be a deterrent that there's not like a station there, "Hey, come rent your boats here." But, you know, people do find us and we help and all of that, so.
Other questions from the council members? All yours. Then I would entertain a motion.
Can we talk about the...
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, we get to kayak, kayak, I jumped ahead.
Yep. And then the kayak and canoe storage rentals, this surprised me, that there's not a lot of options out there for storage rentals for seasonals. I called around to a few different Vermont places and places that rent the boats, and they all said no, with the exception of Umeac. And you can see that there, $50 a month. The Community Sailing Center in Burlington charged us $200 a season. Actually, the only two places, based on a Google search and even asking on Facebook, you know, if anyone knew of any places that rent, do seasonal storage rentals, and the only one that I got was the Burlington one. So, those are the rates. Elsewhere, our proposed rate was $75 a season, I would suggest, based on the other cost, that we would keep that the same, but sort of a little bit of a conversation on that.
Well, that's certainly a nice expense, I don't know why, right? I think, I think we should charge, you know, at least, we need to charge for that.
You know, if anyone has ever inquired about like canoe or kayak customers, they've never been deterred from the cost as of yet, so anyone that has inquired has indeed gotten a spot.
Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding that the spot rental came about because some residents weren't really able to transport their kayak or canoe back and forth, and that's really a hardship for people that want to use the lake for boating. So, I've always thought of it as a public service, of having those racks there that are not used for anything else, and encourages people to get out and be more active who aren't able to transport their kayak or canoe by themselves. So I would suggest that we make that very reasonable. I don't think there's any maintenance associated with people renting the slot, is that true?
Yeah, yeah, we just have to be eventually replacing the racks or any repairs, we kind of buy signage for them, because a lot of folks now that got reason and just freely don't have a quarter to store their dinghies to get out to the morgues, I don't think that was the intention of the rack. We've been fielding inquiries in the office, you know, to make sense.
I think $75 for a season is real cheap. If you divide that up by, well, May to October...
May 1 to October 30, so four months.
Right, that's four.
Five months.
Five months, that's real inexpensive, I think. $25 a month, and I think, and I think we're already, what was I going to say, unless I'm sure that's how you, sorry. Now, we're already waiving a lot of fees that take a hit in the rec department, and I think, and the rec needs to have some, I'd say, revenue sources for all the things that will need to be repaired. And I don't think that's a hindrance for an entire season.
I think that I would, I would agree, if we had ever taken calls where people were like, "Ah, you know what, I can't afford that, never mind, sorry," then I would think, but so far, we haven't, and anyone actually said that.
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if people use it seasonally, or other people who use it for a two-week period because they're in the area and not seasonally?
We've only had seasonal uses so far. We did last year implement that, I think it's $10 a week maybe, for someone that was visiting, but so far, no one's utilized that. We really only have a couple people that use this, and there's maybe, there's two for sure, one person has two boats, and then there's a few down at the dock that are really just dinghy storage, and there's open spaces, there's not a lot of call for that. And like I said, probably if we marketed it more, it's one of those things where if we told the world and they knew about it, we may end up with more takers, but.
Any other questions from council members? That was the last thing, the questions on this would be asked Jess to follow up on. Then I guess, at this time, I would entertain a motion for whatever the council decides.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we accept the rates set for 2019 as proposed, approve these changes.
A motion is made, is there a second?
No, second.
Main and seconded discussion. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, do you have an extra popular rate sheet, or do you want me to set to a target?
If that's accurate, you can have mine. I changed those numbers, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, but whatever that is.
Do you want the full rate sheet, or just, does this have to be, or just follow-ups from the last?
Maybe the full rate sheet.
Oh, well, then.
Yeah, I can even add that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The next item is the recreation committee bylaws for review and possible vote. Let Jess give a brief overview, and then council can ask questions.
Yeah, so I'm pretty excited, I got, I got to do these a little bit sooner than I was anticipating, I thought this would be a project that would come closer into the fall, but a little bit of downtime, so I've been able to research a few different communities. What I've found is that bylaws for recreation committees are all over the gamut. There are some that are really casual, and then there's some that are gooey and different fancy, and finding something kind of entertaining that met our needs is a little bit of a challenge. So, I pieced together a few different things. The main communities that I researched were Middlebury, Waterbury, and Cell, and I took a lot of the language from theirs and kind of moved it into ours. So, this was just my first pass. Just to remind you, the history of the rec committee, we've had one since, as far as back as I can tell on the community report, a very, very long time, but I was, when I came on board as the park supervisor, six years ago now, the committee was, Andy was trying to get the community to meet every month, and we were having a really hard time with people showing up, so Andy and I would stay until 7 o'clock, and I gave the agenda ready to go, and then we would come, or one person would come maybe every couple months. So, it was just really inconsistent. So in March of 2017, he sent out an email saying, "Hey, guys, we recognize that everyone's really busy, and we're going to suspend meetings, but I'm wondering if you would still be on call and hold your seat on rec committee for, in times of need, basically." And they all said, "Yeah, sure, that works for us." And then in the meantime, I've been asking them annually, when it comes time for appointments in March, if they're still willing to continue on in that capacity, and they've all confirmed as of now. So, this is, my hope is that, once we have a new set of bylaws or some sort of governing document to help lay the parameters for this committee's meeting, we can cast the net, again, ask all of our existing committee members if they're interested in still being on board, given these parameters, and then hopefully recruit some new members and some new life into that committee, to get it revitalized and active again. So this is kind of my first go, just based on some things that I've seen, and things that I've heard of the old rec committee and stuff like that, so, any thoughts?
I thought they were very, very well written. The only thing I would add is somewhere under the financial aspect, final approval of any expenditures is, should be approved, and needs to be approved by the council.
Okay, so.
That's the way it's been in the past, as far as my history.
Yeah, it could be approved later.
Yeah, so you might want to, that way it's clear, because you are going to give these to the members of the committee, and just so that they know that even if the committee approves something, the council has the final, final say as far as the expenditures. Might be on the funds in donation, you know, you can put it under there. Any funds raised by the committee become assets of municipality, which we need to deposit in the City's Recreation Trust Fund.
How about...
Under funds in donation.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a line in there, I'll let them word, however.
How about expenditures for the Recreation Trust Fund to support committee projects must be approved both by the Parks and Recreation Director and the Recreation Committee before being sent for final approval to council? Does that work?
Anybody have any concerns with that wording? That was the only thing I really saw, that I saw, I thought they were well-written.
Mr. Mayor?
Provides guidance, yes?
I have a couple of suggestions. The first under membership, you're proposing that the committee should consist of five to seven members. I'm thinking that a higher cap might be better, because if I remember correctly, the rec committee provides most of the manpower for your events.
We would love to hope that that will happen.
Uh-huh. So rather than cap it at seven, why don't we consider raising it to 10 or 11? And that way, if more people are interested, you have a better...
Yeah, so maybe, could we expand the range a little bit and say from five to 10 or whatever, only for the purposes of this next conference, or which says, or somewhere in here, it says that a majority has to be present in order to conduct a meeting? I'm a little bit gun-shy about requiring a large number, only because if we don't get a large turnout, we'll be, we'll be stifled with our business. And the other piece I wanted to mention is, we talked about this a lot with the existing rec committees, what if, what if people, at first, it started about being residents versus non-residents, what if people that are non-residents want to be on the committee, or other people that want to be on the committee but they can't commit to the meetings all the time? And I said, "Absolutely, we'll always take volunteers to help with whatever." So in fact, what we used to do with the committee is, "Hey, guys, we need volunteers, if you have any friends or family that you can bring along with you, we'll take them." So, I think as far as just the governing of the meetings and the decision-making, I was thinking that a lower number works better, but I certainly, I think that you make a good point, as far as having a lower number than five, hopefully we can fill all the seats as well.
Historically, I think it's nine, I'm trying to remember the end of the report of the columns, and it was...
There was seven for quite a few years.
It used to be nine, it was eight, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Do you want to cap it, five to 10 or five to 11, or would you rather have it be a minimum of five?
That's a good idea.
You could have, if you had a minimum.
We wouldn't, not that I really think it would ever happen, but we want 50 people on the rec committee putting their input on, you know.
Yeah, and you got to keep it an odd number. You also have to keep it an odd number.
You want to make sure your quorum number is manageable and achievable, as you pointed out.
I'd put five to nine, because nine was the traditional number.
And I have one more thing.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I think, under, page one, the bottom paragraph, that committee may include the Newport Parks and Rec Director as a non-boarding member. I'm wondering if we might also include that the chamber should have a representative as a standing member on the, on the committee.
How form the chamber specifically?
Because they are your biggest partner in events.
I'm not sure I would agree with that holistically. I think that a person from the chamber could be on there, but the chamber is, for a long time, is also kind of asleep, and now they're kind of revitalizing themselves. So if you put it in there, would it be a requirement, or just a, a goal? Only because I don't, if we had to come back later and...
I would, as a volunteer board member for several organizations, I would say, having a slot reserved for the chamber would be great, but if it was unfilled, it'd be okay? Nobody's going to be in trouble.
And it does say on here that the Parks and Recreation Director may, so there's no right, or no one there, I remember.
You're going to want to change that to be a nine, down there too, max.
Any other thoughts?
I want a chamber freshman to be a non-boarding member. You've just got to give the idea, we do that, we've got one at the ladder.
Then do we need to, do we need to get that specific?
Well, if you want somebody, if you really want somebody in the chamber just to give the idea, that's fine, but you don't need to be a boarding member.
They could be ex officio.
If they have capacity. Yeah, I think the only reason for that sentence, and that was something that I pulled from Waterbury's, the hope is that this rec committee will be able to stand on its own, but... The hope is that this Rec Committee will be able to stand on its own, but having the Rec Director there to help kind of get them on their feet and help facilitate or answer any questions that they may have about the Rec Department's activities. I think that that's really relevant. But as I said, it's still kind of vague. We don't really have to take that specifically. Does the council have any thoughts? Is that something we should include, the chamber piece, or? Are there other boards that might feel like they would like to have a seat on there? Can we do that?
They've got to be public meetings, right? So if somebody wants to go.
That's right.
You know, they're available. You just have to set up your procedural rules, so you know, if you've got fifty people, they're in control.
Right.
Mr. Mayor. Again, this was just presented to us on Friday. Perhaps we could wait until next week's meeting and allow people to give their input before putting it to a vote. Though of course, it would be nice to hear from the people in the room.
Mr. Mayor, I came in today earlier seeing if there was a previous policy.
Yeah.
And it can't be found, I guess. So I talked to one member and he said there was, but they didn't have a copy, don't really remember. And I didn't have time after work, I was going to call Steve Eggenley because he was a longtime member. And like he says, if I could see the other policy and compare and see what was going on in the past versus what you want to do today. Nothing wrong with this, it's just.
I believe me, and I actually did check with Steve and I checked with Brian and with Red and a few other old committee members. And that was, that's the only reason, the weighting on this policy was the, or this, these bylaws, this governing document, was the only reason that our Rec Committee hasn't had the net casted. I've been trying, I looked back in the archives, Jim, and had no luck. So I'm not sure who else to ask if that's something we want to do.
Back in nineteen eighty when I started participating in city events, it's been a long time. Harry Corwell attended, and he was a non-boarding member. He attended three single one of those. My wife was on there for, on the board for fifteen years. Harry always attended the meeting and he was an onboard.
Now, the Rec Committee from way back, they used to be the ones that put on all the events versus the Rec Department. Is that some of the history?
No.
I remember like.
When the Rec Committee started, the Rec Committee was formed to do, come up with events and run the events so the Rec Department didn't have to do it. That's where that committee was established. And then all the, all the profit after expenses went into that Rec Trust Fund. There hasn't been a deposit in the Rec Trust Fund for a long, I mean, small, for a long time.
It was almost an independent organization.
That's the hope, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't, I don't believe it was established to raise funds for the operating budget of the Rec Department. That's not what it was established. It was established to run events so the Rec Department didn't have to do it. That's the way it's been. I mean, that's the way it was established. I got one other thing, just, these are my mind. Down under membership, they expressly understood that the Rec Committee can't do all these things, don't have authorization to do anything. But up in the second paragraph, it says you need a quorum to take necessary binding action. Assume the binding action would be an internal committee decision?
Yeah, that was my question.
Like, who's going to do what?
Yeah. Should I say, are we necessary to take any binding action for the committee?
Am I clarifying?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so otherwise you can't do all this stuff and then you can take the binding action.
Yeah, yeah.
Other input? We are scheduled to meet next week, so we could hold off for one more week and give people a chance to look at this and think about it and let Jess incorporate a few changes we've made. Is that okay with the council?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll have this on the next agenda.
Aside from the changes that we made tonight, is there anything else that you want me to do that we're holding off for?
On this, not for me, I know about other members. No, it's very good. A lot of work to make sure.
Is there just a second?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Anybody else need this coffee? Do you want to leave that for Charlie? Is Charlie? Oh, Charlie is here. I wanted to that for you, Charlie.
The next item is DRB alternate appointment. Zoning Administrator Charlie Elliott.
Unintroduced Dan Pickering to you. Let him come up as the Chair of Honor. Dan works for the high school and I believe he's in charge of mostly the building maintenance and custodian services, as I understand it. He's expressed an interest in being an alternate on the DRB. The DRB is in a building and gave him a unanimous vote of approval and recommendation to you. Dan has expressed his desire and assurance that he will attend meetings and that he is interested in the work and getting involved with the DRB activities. And I anticipate we will be occasionally putting him to work, given that we have some people that still don't know how we show up. We do need the alternate at this time. So I'll let you speak with Dan and I'll sit down and be quiet.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Charlie. Mr. Elliott, how many applications did you receive and were they all interviewed?
The process of applications went back to when we were looking for full-time members. And Dan, we filled the full-time positions. Dan was the only one we had left for an alternator. And he expressed his opinion or willingness. We had a long break in between DRB meetings, the only meet for hearings. So it's been several, about six months now, that we've been waiting to get it through the process and to hear. So we did not have a separate advertisement for members beyond that one back in the spring. But Dan began approaching us at about that time.
And one more question. When did the DRB make this recommended, recommendation?
This was made at their last meeting, I think it was about two weeks ago.
Thank you.
Questions? Personal trash for Dan, he's in the hot seat.
How about, what's your interest in being on the DRB?
Really, like I told Charlie, I'm around a lot of people that all have opinions about how things function in the city and everything like that. And my view is if you have an opinion, but if you want to make a difference or you want to have a say or help towards making good cause happen, then go about it in the right way.
Mr. Mayor. I have the pleasure of knowing Dan from the high school and seeing him in action. And really, he is extremely well qualified for this. He manages the other maintenance people very well. They work together well. There's very little strife and jobs get done the way they're supposed to be. I think it would be an excellent solution.
I think it's important that we appoint an alternate sooner than later because I know the last several months, the DRB had to cancel meetings because they didn't have quorums. But they couldn't get the, they had the alternate and they had to cancel hearings because they couldn't get quorums at their meetings. So I think a reliable alternate, I think, is key. Especially if you're an applicant for a permit and you've gone to one meeting and all of a sudden it's canceled and your whole permit is kind of up in the air.
Charlie, what's the length of term on this?
What's that?
Is there a term length on this alternate? Is there a term length on the alternate?
I think it's the same as the regular three years.
Other questions? Is there anybody from the council? You would need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Dan Pickering as an alternate on the DRB.
Motion to make eight, is there a second? A seconded discussion on the motion? Very well. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, is he replacing somebody or is it an alternate they can take?
We have not had an alternate with a DRB for over a year or more. So basically, he's starting out fresh. He's not filling in for anyone leaving.
How many members are on the DRB now?
Pardon?
How many, how many members are on the DRB?
Five.
Including Dan?
No.
No, regular members. And we try to have one or two alternates. By the nature of the DRB's work, being the judicial group that approves hearings, it's kind of necessary to have a quorum. So we do try to have alternates that can fill in and also try to have a full board at the same time.
Just as an example, like the meeting that I went to, they would be an alternate because they were the person that would show up.
So just one alter? Just this, this one alternate now, or?
He will be the only alternate at all.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
For Charlie. Do you usually have advance notice if you're going to have a full board or not? So you can call in your alternates?
Not always. Not always. So what I plan on doing is when I distribute material to the full board, I'm also going to distribute a copy to Dan so he will know each time what's going on. And the best we can, we'll give him advance notice. If he wants, he can come and sit in. And if he does come and sit in and there's an absence, he'll go to work. But I will keep it up to date with all the materials that we can fill in on short notice when necessary.
I didn't think we voted because Chris had a question. I didn't think we voted, that's why I was, because Chris had a rush. What? We did vote.
Yeah.
You're confusing me. Oh. I thought, yeah, it was unanimous. He's saying no, he's saying. No, I said I wasn't sure, that's why I said. He said not sure, he's saying no, he doesn't think he has. I thought we did, yeah. There was a motion made seconded. We got approved, the second we voted, that's what I thought. Okay, great, thank you.
Well, Dennis, I wasn't sure either.
They're just trying to confuse me tonight. I think that's what it is. Okay, the next item, set the tax rate.
I, we finally got through the appeals and grievances, they will set a tax rate, the tax base down. So the nineteen, the eighteen nineteen tax rates are based on a grand bill, bill grand list of three hundred and nineteen million ninety-four thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. And a budget of three million eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars. You'll see separate lines for appropriations amounted to a hundred and fifty-five thousand sixty-eight dollars and voted exemptions in the amount of fifty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars. And what you see on the paper is the tax rates for resident and non-resident. The resident rate this year will be two point seven zero eight one. And the non-resident rate is two point eight nine zero four. The big culprit in all this is, again, the education rate. The non, the resident education rate went up seven cents. The non-resident education rate went up fourteen cents, approximately. The municipal rate went up around two cents. And there you have it. So this is the tent to September when you get the tax bill built, first of October.
Guess I was baffled.
It is what it is.
Oh, I know, I'm baffled by the, I'm still baffled by the education rate. Because when they presented budgets.
I'd only take what they tell me.
No, I know, when they presented budgets, supposedly the high school, they first said it was quote-unquote level funded. The elementary was only supposed to be like two cents. And we got over seven cents, we got over fourteen cents. To me, that's not sustainable. It really truly isn't. But it's out of our hands. It's, you know, whatever the voters approved on the education side. But I'm still baffled by those large increases in the edu. I mean, I'd known about the education rate because it was published on, I think, BT Gigger. They had all the education rates for the whole state. And it just baffled me then and I, everyone keeps saying it's at common level appraisal. Well, we're at almost ninety-nine percent. So that's what baffles me too, because it's supposed to be near a hundred percent. And I can't seem to get a straight answer out of anyone why it jumped so much. No one can answer my question as far as why it jumped.
I don't know, they have a big long formula to go through that I don't pretend I'm.
But these kind of increases on that side, we can't sustain it. And that's the issue.
The only other thing, the only other thing's a small thing, other than the education rates. The grand list of the city went down about seven hundred thousand dollars. And the budget is up about eighty-five thousand dollars. I mean, that's a small thing. Still, the city municipal rate's only up two cents.
Municipal rate. And the grand list went down because of the tax dues.
So we base it on three fifteen, right? So the fact that.
Well, last year.
Right. Oh, not this year? What did we use this year?
Three hundred and nineteen million. That's what the grand list is.
So we base the budget on a grand list of three nineteen?
That's what the tax rate's figuring, because that's what the grand list is.
No, but what do we base the budget on, a grand list of?
That was, that was the year we just got done with. Not this year. I couldn't be wrong on that.
Do you have an annual report? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a few, excuse me. We have a slight advantage.
We based it. No, we based it on three hundred and fifteen.
Yeah.
So we're lucky it's up.
Yeah, we did. I thought the three fifteen stuck in my head. So I don't know, I'm just curious, that education side. Just, every year it seems to be the education side that takes the big increase. It is what it is and we have to vote on it, unfortunately. So I'm going to need a motion.
No, nobody wants to make it for somebody better.
I will make it to accept the tax rate.
A motion remains, is there a second? A seconded discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'd like the vote no, but we can't, it's set in stone.
Mr. Mayor, what's the largest reason for the increase? And I realize it's a small increase on the municipal side. Is there any particular department?
We budgeted based upon a, actually, the increase is less. We budgeted, based upon a, actually, the increase is less than...
Right.
It's a less of an increase, because the grand list was larger. We based the budget on a three hundred and fifteen million dollar grand list and it's at three hundred and nineteen million. Three hundred and nineteen million, yeah.
Why is the grand list larger?
Because of...
Because we reappraised?
We reappraised it.
It went up, we did, we did read the studies.
And because sales, it's based on sales. Um, you know, fair market value, the fair market value of homes is higher.
When was the reappraisal, this past year or this past year?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. May I have a copy of the information in private?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
You want one, Joe? All right. Well, the budget amount, the budget increased about eighty-five thousand, that didn't change. The grand list went up four million dollars. Good thing it did, because the rate would be a lot higher than it is now.
All right, moving on.
I just, one thing I wanted to clarify in my own mind. Mr. Mayor, the treasurer said that there was a decline of seven hundred thousand dollars. I take it that's from the original amount that the assessors brought in after grievances? Is that what you meant? Thank you.
Okay, moving on, the next...
Processing out.
I thought, I thought we did vote again, but we did, I know we did this time, I made a note. The next item is public records policy review and possible vote.
Well, I've written a memo, just to recall. We've been reviewing a public records access policy for the past couple of meetings. Dan raised a question about why the league would say we only need one policy when we have a policy for the police department. And I called the Vermont City Cities and Towns and spoke to Carl Andyre. I'm basically just reading a memo and the memo was posted online. And I guess the big question is, did it answer your question or what further questions do you have or comments at this point? What Carl explained is that when they generated the public record statute, they did it with the state line, not municipal services. So the bottom line for the league is to make sure that when we get a public records request, that we're meeting it, we're doing it lawfully. I did put in a sort of perennas about the questions that came up with the clerk treasurer. He's an elected official, so he gets to basically handle his office the way that we'd like to and you're in compliance with the Secretary of State.
There we have it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So there's no question about that. So I'm not sure what else I can do in terms of research, so I'm eager to hear your questions so I can either do my research or kill it.
So at this point, the police department has their own policy. Jim works through the state statute. And being an elected official, if he wanted a policy, he'd probably generate his own for his department. So now I'm wondering, who is this policy, who am I going to apply to? Because they're not gonna come and ask me for information. I don't think they'll ask anybody here. They could ask you, right? And they could ask Charlie for information, zoning information. So in effect, it would be you and Charlie?
Well, it would be me and all the administrative offices, it would be each department. So for example, we have experienced a records request in the past, just received a records request today to assemble some data that we don't, we're gonna have to make that data. It's a new request. So there's an example where we could receive a request at any time about anything. And again, our policy, the policy that I'm proposing is very close to the police department's policy. This policy has a clause in it that allows us to create data if it doesn't exist, if it makes our job easier. This one also has a different fee scale than the police. Other than those two things, it's virtually the same policy.
So does the fee scales all follow the state policy, the state statute? Or do you set, I mean, the state statute tells you what you can set for fees? And that's always been, been my thing. Jim has always been able to write, do his under the state statute. And obviously, in the past, we've always done ours under the state statute. And... So I don't really see a need for another policy, that's just my point. And when you say it's to serve the public, you know, I love looking at the LCT. Because it, sometimes it's like, it's like doublespeak. That, you know, in one place they're telling you one thing. And I always have a quandary about asking attorney, I have this problem and what can I do to solve it? Usually your attorney will tell you, in a way, the best way for you to do it, and not, you know...
It's not that we have a, if I can't, Dan, it's not that we have a problem, I'm trying to put protections and guidance in place from that.
Then, you know, when the V L C T, the L C T makes no express or implied endorsement or recommendation of any ordinance or any expression implied guarantee of legal enforcement. And one of the things I was looking at was just the definitions of policy. Now, this is their definition. And they talk about policies. Are executive in nature and oriented inwards to guide internal decision-making. Generally, policies apply to employees, facilities, and the public body itself. Do not have regulatory enforcement authority. And my biggest concern is, is if we don't incorporate all the information required by the statute, we're more apt to set ourselves for a lawsuit than if we follow the statute. So if, you know, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know if that policy follows the statute to the letter. I can't determine that on my own. And I, and I know you've got an opinion from the city attorney. So we paid him to correct his own document that he gave to the V L C T, you know...
He updated one sentence.
I just don't see a need for it.
Sure, a couple things. One example of why I think this is a hindering policy more than a help. At the bottom of page three, under number two, standard formats. The very last paragraph says that a request for a copy in a format other than those mentioned above is non-standard. The custodian will not provide a copy of a public record in a non-standard format. Example, conversion of a paper public record to electronic format. So for me, as somebody who seeks information pretty regularly, the other day I emailed Jim and said, hey, can you send me a scanned copy of our list of ordinances? And bing bang boom, here it is, scanned and emailed. It's a public record, I asked for it, he delivered it without me having to make a special trip to go into the office. I, I'm with Dan that we just, we don't need this policy. And it'll create more problems, I think, for both the public and for the custodians, as they're called in the policy, than a help. I mean, if I'd had to fill out a form just to get the list of ordinances, that would have been really unfriendly.
By state statute, you don't have to fill out a form unless you're requested to do so, because it's a special, a special reason. But... With technology today, PDFs and all kinds of things, it's, you know, a phone call can do it with an email. Doesn't really incorporate the technology that we have in our news. And I don't know, Charlie?
Can I ask Charlie a question?
Yes, do you, do you have a procedure for record keeping?
I have a procedure for...
Record keeping?
The procedure, I keep the records, okay? The state procedures require that we keep basically paper records for fifteen years. Beyond that, the statutes are that what is, is, it doesn't make any difference what permits were or were not, if it's existed for fifteen years. Now, we do keep a lot of other records downstairs for what they're worth, sometimes there's something there that's useful. There are some old maps around that we have to do help doing title searches and other things with. It is kind of hit or miss whatever was kept in the past. Currently, today, I'm also maintaining electronic files at the end of each year of all of the permits I issued during the year. So that if you called up and you wanted to know what such and such a permit was last year, I can simply go to my computer and email it to you. And there'd be a duplicate in the paper file as well. As you go, historically, the paper records were kept. Normally, the permit form I can find, but a lot of times supporting data doesn't come up missing. That answer your question?
Then my next question is, do you eat anything in your records that you would have to say no to a person if they asked for it?
Anything that's in the land records and so on is basically public information. So that if you ask for it, you definitely would make it available to you. The only time that I might say no to somebody is if somebody comes in and you ask information about somebody who's planning something, they haven't filed for an actual permit yet. And I feel that it's a courtesy to let people plan their own project while we make it public. And once they apply for the permit, then that becomes a public document, they have to post a sign, it becomes public knowledge. But from that point on, if anybody asks for it, I don't know of anything that would qualify as non-public. I mean, lawyers are supposed to come in and search and find all of these records if they want to, doing title searches, and that can include zoning records. And they do search them on occasion. As far as that goes, we do have, and this is required too, down in Jim's office, now for, I don't know when it started, I think in the, within the nineties? But all of the permits are recorded down there when they're issued.
Yeah, back in the nineties.
And the certificate of occupancy, we've started doing the exact same thing. So to find a permit, if you go downstairs and search your record, you can find the permit. You won't find the supporting data, but you will find the actual permit. Thank you.
So one, I'm sorry, one thing to clarify. Julie, the document that you got from Jim is in his office. So as we mentioned, he can set up his own rules, and he did. If we were asked for something as simple as that, we would follow the same process. So we're not intending to make anything overly cumbersome or laborious for anybody to use our system or to request records. When we have something that is complex, that's when this policy will come in handy. So again, this is a policy that would relate to the remaining admin offices. It's not intended to be overly cumbersome. It's intended to provide protection and guidance to the consumer as well as to the employee.
Can we put it online?
We can certainly put it online.
The one thing that I don't think, I don't see, yes, this is it. Public record inspection, copying, transmission policy, this was the PD policy?
Yeah.
That's what I...
Yeah. That was asked also as compared to...
Right. Right, that's why I thought. No, we approved in March of two thousand seventeen. I don't know, I guess I just see this as kind of a duplicate.
But we don't have one that pertains to the rest of the offices. So, I mean, to, to have it be as closely aligned with the police, I think is a good thing. That way it's consistent, we're following the law.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
I haven't heard one compelling reason that would cause me to support this policy. If perhaps in the future, we were presented with an example where if this policy had been in place where somebody's life would have been made easier, then I would consider it. But at this point in time, I, I have no interest in passing this policy.
Other comments from council members?
I like the fact, the policy sets a common level playing field for everybody. As Mr. Elliott had mentioned, he typically doesn't release records of somebody that hasn't applied for a romantic or anything. But that's not right now. I mean, there's no level playing field. I, I like, I like knowing the rules and that they're the same across the board.
This wouldn't address that.
Huh? Well, that was just an example. It's... Without a standard for all the departments involved, each department will have their own interpretation.
Anything else?
I'm just curious, Julie, about your comment, how would it not provide uniformity?
I'm sorry?
How would it not provide uniformity? You said it wouldn't address that.
Oh, I was specifically referring to Charlie's example of whether or not to, to release information about a permit that hadn't yet been applied for. I don't think this policy would help in that situation.
In Charlie's case, if somebody comes in and talks to him about a permit, there's no record yet until they do file an application. So there's really nothing to give to anybody.
There's nothing to be released.
That was nothing to be released.
Perhaps a poor example, but it, my point still stands, a level playing field.
And that goes back, and I think in my communication with you, I discussed that, like, even though we have different departments, it can't be incorporated into one document because we've all gotta follow the same thing. Now, you understand the police department is probably the one that has the most issue with material being kept private. You know, they have lots of things under their table. You know, they might have a, an informant they have to protect. You know, there's a police investigation going on that they don't want released, there's so many things that they have to keep to themselves, and the rest of us really don't. Charlie doesn't really have anything that's secret. Jim might have.
I don't have very much.
But I don't see the other departments having anything that would be secret. Maybe, maybe the fire department would if there's an arson investigation and they can't release information.
But this isn't about giving yourself a secret. It's about having a process.
Right, but having a policy that's equivalent to everybody. And I think one would do it. I think it could be written so one policy covers everybody. And I think I would very much like a policy like that. But I don't want to see all of a sudden, now all of a sudden, we've got this one for these departments. Now we can have one for Charlie, you know, maybe, I don't know, even four of them.
But I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that you have a policy that is neck and neck with the existing police departments. This policy pertains to the administrative offices. This is one policy that pertains to the administrative offices.
Why can't we have just one policy for the city? Do we have to follow Stig's statute as it is?
Right, I think that Seth has some special circumstances, and I don't want to interfere with, with what Seth needs in his department.
But I think it goes back to what I said. You can't have any special circumstances that are not in the statute. His circumstances have to follow the statute. Everybody else's.
And he has a different piece scale. And I, I don't want to interfere with what Seth has in his office because it's working for him.
Anything else?
I'll go back to the creation of public records. Just to Charlie's comment about not creating a record of a permit he doesn't have yet, and the fact that Jess has got to come up with all this stuff that she doesn't have. And this policy, the customer will not create a public record that does not exist. Except they can, that's going to save them heartache two weeks down the road. No worries, they can create if they want, but they're not compelled to.
Okay. Well, at this time, I think we've discussed this. Do we need a motion if you so choose to accept the policy as presented by the city manager? All make a motion to accept the policy. Motion been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made and seconded, discussion, discussion. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Two ayes and two noes? I'm going to vote no.
Mr., so Mr. Me and Mr. Schnett and Mr. Ross were the ones who voted no?
No.
Or they voted in favor?
Miss, I mean, I'll clarify. Mr. Schnett, Mr. Charbonneau voted aye. Mr. Ross, Mr. Bowen voted no, and I voted no. Moving on, Mr. Johnson, new business. Mr. Charbonneau, new business. Mr. Bowen, new business.
Yes, I've had a lot of people questioning me about the budget for the centennial and wanting to see the final budget, a profit and loss statement kind of thing. I was wondering if we could make that available.
Sure?
Any parameters of like when?
I think we can probably put it together for next week. If, if we can't, I'll have it for the following meeting.
Great, I can talk later.
Anything else?
Oh, no, thank you.
I don't have any. Any, any new business?
I would, I think I made it clear I was on the council years ago. And when I was on the council, I voted no on the police vote. And I noticed a substantial repair bill. And I was wondering if the hours of usage can be broken out? How many hours the vote is actually used for versus what repair costs and stuff are?
We can work on that, we'll work on something.
Any other new business?
We do all business, not Mr.?
No, we've done all business here, just new business. Any, anything else? No? Any new business?
No.
Okay, move on. Old business, Mr. Johnson.
Uh, the only thing, now that the tax rate's been set, we can expect a tax bill in the next four, five weeks.
Thank you.
Everybody wants to hear that.
Anything else? Old business?
Unfortunately, yes. I attended the planning commission meeting earlier this week, and once again, the issue of email addresses for planning commission members came up. And I know at a previous meeting, a couple of members had said that they created their own email addresses, but apparently, apparently that's not universal across the planning commission, and they would still like to be assigned city email addresses. And I would like to see that happen.
You'll have to contact that company, and then we'll have to pay extra per month.
I think it's going to come down to budgeting it. It's going to end up being about four hundred dollars a year. So if that's something that the council wants to support, then we can do that.
And, any other old business? We had old business, which was appointing a negotiating team for the labor contract. This should have been done in open meeting. Because we're not supposed to conduct business behind shut doors, and we appointed a committee without having it in open meeting. And so we need to, I don't have all my emails, but the, that needs to be done in open meeting. And so, so currently, I know we had chosen, well, it was Mr. Schnett and Mr. Charbonneau. But we really need to formally do it in open meeting. Mr. Ross?
The impression I had when we left was it was undecided if you were going to serve or not. And I think you made that decision, you're not going to serve.
Oh, and the negotiating committee due to time. I emailed the manager, city manager, that I could not serve, I think, because I have time restraints.
I believe that it should be three people negotiating. And I think, for me, I would nominate Julie. And I would put it into a motion that the three people would, if it would entertain a motion. I would make a motion that Mr. Schnett, Mr. Charbonneau, and Mr. Bowen be appointed to the negotiating committee.
So, we're going to second that?
We need a second.
On second.
So a motion made, second, now we can have discussion, yes?
We historically have not had three people. The other side does not have three people. So I want to just, I, I think part of this should maybe be discussed in executive session, actually, because we're talking about negotiation and come out.
Well, when, when we were discussing it, there was going to be three people, so I don't know why it can't be three people. Because the mayor was going to be included with Mr. Schnett and.
He was going to be a possible backup. He was drilled, we have a team, and we're good.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
The email exchange I had with Vermont Lake of Cities and Towns made it very clear that appointing a negotiating team is to be done in open session and not in executive session. There were reasons stated in executive session that shouldn't have been about the volunteers or non-volunteers for the negotiating team. And I made it clear that I have experience negotiating contracts. I have the time and the availability and the willingness, knowledge of insurance and human resources. Your response was just to not even finalize a team, but to move on from that meeting and find out later that you picked the final team and didn't even inform anybody. That was an improper procedure.
I don't think so.
You saw the email from the VLCT.
And I, I also have a response that our, again, our city attorney agrees that the appointment should be made on the record. He doesn't agree with the site that the VLCT stated. He stated he believes it should be three one three eight three, is an easier ground. And titled twenty-one BSA seventeen twenty-five B states that the municipal employer shall be represented in the bargaining by its legislative body or its designated representative or representatives. So now we're designating the representatives in open session.
No, yes, but it sounded like you had already picked your team and that negotiations have already begun. And bypassed a willing volunteer.
I think any further conversation has to be held in executive session.
Well, we do have a motion.
You can move the motion.
Does any other council members have any comments? On the motion? If we have three council members, the other side.
So we can't have an executive session?
I think we do.
Have what?
And we need the executive session. The strategy, we don't want, you know, with the union. This is strategy. But no, this is appointment, Joe's looking at me like I'm wrong, but I think, oh no, the other.
I think we either have to withdraw the motion or address the motion.
Right, yeah, I'm trying to, I'm working things out in my mind, I'm sorry, I'm a little slow this evening. My, I'm trying to make sure I do things. But we have a motion. Thing is, we have a motion. Sorry for being so slow, I'm just trying to work it out in my mind, I'm just trying to, trying to. Thinking, I'm just trying to think, I'm involved in all of them. And I'm just trying to think on, I'm involved just about every, you know, every negotiating, and I'm just trying to make sure we don't do something that violates. Go ahead. By the motion, you're saying that you would like to see three people from the city council on the team. Which is allowed. Right, but you would have to notify the other team to let them know. That we have three, that's what I'm, okay, yeah, you're, I'm just trying to get it. That doesn't have to be done in executive session. All you've got to do is just let them know.
Right, we also have one, we have a quorum.
Exactly. And historically, we've always just had two. Because when you have three, then you've got to warn it, but it's not a public meeting. If you have three members, you have to warn it as a meeting, but it's not a public meeting because you're negotiating. So that we saved a step of having to warn meetings and warn because the public is not invited into negotiations. It's all, and the press is not invited, and so.
You're breaking my heart.
You know, I sit in negotiations. You've probably done it in your past life. So that's why we've always had it down to two. To avoid all that publishing in the paper and then having a meeting, calling the meeting to order and.
Going into executive session.
And then going into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to cause any hardship certainly or stall negotiations, but I think it is very important that we're all aware that what we did in executive session a few weeks ago was not right. And allowing the city manager to handpick the only people that she wants and say no to a willing volunteer is not okay.
That's not exactly what happened, Julie, I take offense to that. So I would get the facts straight before you make an accusation.
Mr. Mayor, just, just to clarify, I understand that discussion is held in executive session. Regardless of whether that's proper or not, a decision can't be made in executive session. Did you leave executive session and vote on the matter?
No.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Who's second?
Dan and then Julie. Then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Two ayes and two noes? Another decision.
Who said, who said no?
I haven't voted yet, so give me a minute. I guess based upon all my past stuff, I'm going to have to vote no. Based upon having to notify, having to warn, warn meetings and all that. As far as that aspect.
That's okay, thank you for.
No, I just wanted to make sure we did this in open meeting because it was.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So the motion was to have three instead of two?
Right, and I said no.
And who, what other member said no? Dennis Endy.
No, no, no. He said yes, she said yes, I feel like a traffic. No, no, you said yes, Kevin said yes, Dan said no, Julie said no, and I said no.
No.
And I had a mayor out. Mr. Mayor. I think I should have gone into trash talk tonight. I really think I should have gone to trash talk, man. Go ahead, man, I'm sorry. The motion was to have three people. On the board from the city council. Right. And Mr. Ross and Mr. Bowen voted for that motion. Thank you. I voted against it, Kevin voted against it. And I voted no.
It's a two-member committee.
It's a two-member committee. Yes. And it historically has been, yes.
So there's no other people anywhere, just two council members on the committee? And, Mayor?
No, let me.
So, now, now we actually need to vote on the members. Because we defeated, we defeated his motion to have three. So now, we need a motion to appoint the committee.
That would never go into the other meeting.
Correct, so now we need a motion to appoint the negotiating committee. Mr. Mayor, do you want to make a motion? Yes. I like the motion that I serve on that committee as well as Mr. Charbonneau to represent the city council. A motion's been made, is there a second?
All seconded.
A motion's been made and seconded, now we can have discussion. I saw Seth stand up, I like him to taze me. He didn't hear me say that. I'm sorry. I said, I need to be tased, so I come out of my. That can be arranged. So we have a motion and a second, and discussion from council members first? All right.
I have a question. Have negotiations already started?
Negotiations are a completely confidential process.
I can't hear you.
Negotiations are a completely confidential process, not allowed.
I can't hear you.
Negotiations are completely confidential.
That whether or not they've started should not have to be confidential.
I'm not allowed to say anything.
If they have already started, then it doesn't seem right that two people are already acting in that role if they have not been officially appointed. That makes no sense to me, if that's already happened.
I can't respond, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this motion? And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Sorry.
Are you following, Ms. Chris? Okay, Mr. Mayor. I know. I know. I'm gonna vote no.
No, we need to go to the executive session. We discuss.
Yeah, you vote no. Your no means that we're back to the three.
No, we're back to nobody right now.
We're back to nobody.
Back to nobody.
Mr. Mayor, may I? I don't see any reason for potential bargaining team members to not state in public what they're bringing to the table. And I've already said that I have human resources experience. I've negotiated from a management side. I belong to a union. And I have dealt with health insurance as a professional. I think that makes me more than qualified. I would love to hear from the other two folks who would like to serve.
I have over 12 years' experience with, as a supervisor, dealing with a contract. Our contract that I dealt with is 164 pages. It was my responsibility. And I would like to fully understand the contract, with the reference out of it, with that policy and everything. Combined with the knowledge that I have, that nobody else here, with the exception of Chief, have a police. I know the procedures, I know what's needed, I know why it's needed. There are certain things that are unique to a police contract that, um... Somebody unfamiliar with would have to have it explained to them for each part that they're going through.
I'm not taking part, so I, 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 actually, I was involved with many of them in the past, but I don't have time and taking part in it. Anyone else?
I'm not interested in doing it. I, uh... I have lots of things on my plate in addition to this and my, uh... job. So I don't think I would even begin to find time to make immediate picks on the interesting.
All right. Anything else?
I was hoping to hear from Dennis, but I, apparently, he's not...
There's, there's no need for me to say anything. No comment. So now we need a motion, if anyone wants to, for a negotiating committee. I don't make the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would be willing to make a, a motion to nominate Mr. Chenette and Mr. Charbonneau, if perhaps Mr. Chenette would be willing to share his qualifications of why he would like to serve.
No. I will not give any information.
Then I make the motion to nominate Mr. Charbonneau and myself for the two-person bargaining committee.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion. Then all those, any other, any discussion? Then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Two ayes and two noes? I'm gonna vote aye. Any other?
Ms., Ms. Mayor. When you had the discussion in executive session, was anybody affected that time formally? Because you're, we were... So you just had a discussion, you, so... I'm just trying to make sure that's straight in my head on what happened. What was, uh, three, a meeting, what, two or three weeks ago?
That's why we're doing this now. That's all I'm gonna say. I can't talk about executive session. But that's why we're doing all this now. Because we came out of executive session and no committee was voted on.
In open session.
In open session. Okay. Okay. I have no old business, old business.
I have...
Any old business? No. Old business.
I have a, a quick thing. Because of the last meeting, I went back and I started looking at like the rules and stuff we had. So there's two dates in here. It said December 21, 2015, and then January 23, 2017, where certain items were adopted. So I went back to the minutes to find anything that would reference this document and any kind of vote that might have happened to just to see what it looked like in the minutes. And I found nothing, no mention. So I don't know if the dates here are incorrect or how all of this got approved. And the other thing is on the, um, on our Google Drive, there's a council procedure. And I don't know if that was ever adopted. Where it's got like eight items, the way that the council should operate. And at the end, it has these items. It's like three pages long.
Is it that?
It's that document.
Okay, but it's not exactly this that was on there.
It could be if it's on there.
Okay. I didn't print it out.
I have somewhere.
It might have been this one. And this one says August 7th. Okay. So it could be a date problem then.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I believe it was last August in 2017 when we were asked to adopt the rules of procedure. And they had already been ratified, as it says at the top of this document, December 21st, January 23rd. And then, um... And I was pretty new at the time, so we went through a process of trying to edit quickly and then adopted it. But I, I believe it does say on the website that it needs to be adopted annually.
Yes.
And it was, and it was last August. So it's probably time to...
But, but I know it says there, but the dates that we have shown here don't really coincide with anything. Normally, if you adopt something, there's a vote.
There was a vote. What, they were originally adopted, and then there was the modification that had after every vote. Originally, the original one had council only, but then it was, we changed it so that after every, if a motion made and a second, any public vote or discussion, I opened it up to the vote. That's why that was the January, um...
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third. That was the change.
But there was, there was no vote? In the minutes? Normally, minutes would, at a minimum, require...
These were voted on.
Require the motion to be in there.
This was voted on. These were not voted on. This is the facilitator's discretion.
Okay, I voted, we voted on the other thing.
Right. This is your prerogative as the facilitator of the meeting to impose rules. That was a model that was taken off a couple of different other public meetings.
That's right. We had the other one and this.
Right.
Confusing myself. You're right. This came from, a lot of this came from other municipalities.
I, I understand. I see nothing wrong with the rules and stuff. What I see wrong is, is if you had a vote on something in a public meeting, then there's no record of it.
This wasn't, this is something that I could, I implemented. As the facilitator.
You implemented it without a vote?
He has a right to do that.
No, he doesn't have the right to do that.
He has a right to put on guidelines.
I can set guidelines. These are guidelines. This isn't a policy. This is just guidelines that I can do as the moderator of the meeting.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, I confused the issue. I thought we were talking about the rules of procedure.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. And that was last August.
Right. These were guidelines. If you have an issue with some of the guidelines, I can revisit it.
No, because they were initially in an ordinance. I have no, no issue with that.
I don't think it was an ordinance.
Oh, there's one on Google Drive, but it gives a lot of information, and at the bottom, it says to be adopted yearly. And I think it, uh...
That's that. That's not this.
But the title of it is such that it's titled as a guideline.
This?
No, the document online.
This is rules of procedure.
Yes.
Is this what you're referring to?
Yeah, I don't know if that's identical with online.
That's voted on every year.
Yep.
Rules of procedure is voted on every year. These are guidelines.
The last date was August. Okay. All right. I, I don't have a problem with this. It was trying to find...
I'm just trying to get, I'm getting you...
I, I was trying to find...
I got mixed up between that and this. And that's what...
When there's two dates and I'm trying to find something that was adopted or talked about in the meeting, and it's not there.
Okay. Anything else? Now that you're confusing me even more.
I think it...
Okay, you're confusing me tonight. All right, any old business? Then we need, the next meeting will be September 17th, 6:30 PM here. We need a motion to adjourn at 8:10.
So?
Motion made, is there a second? Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, it's perfect, motion carried.